Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, December 17th. The time is now 7:14. There's a quorum of the board present. We have members Lou Gieto, Debra Roberts, Joe McChrisky, Vice Chair Scott Carrera, and myself. So seeing us, a quorum present, calls to order. First order of business is to stand, if you're able, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
So before we begin, I do want to make an announcement that a couple of these items on our agenda won't be covered tonight. Item number six, the interview and consideration of appointment for town clerk. That is, we're not going to cover that tonight. A member of the Select Board has asked for some information and an opportunity to review that information, and I think that's fair, so we're going to cover that at our next meeting. Additionally, item number five, water and sewer rates hearing. Our superintendent of water and sewer is not able to make it this evening, had a bit of emergency, and so we'll reschedule that as well. So the first item on our agenda beyond that is citizens' comments. I'd like to know how many people are looking to speak. Okay, good number, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. I mean, there's about nine people, plus somebody online, I think, might have responded. Okay, so we'll do what we've done in the past. I'm going to start with people online and then move my way down the aisles. Before I do, allow me just to read a statement. So this is revised after Barron versus Southborough. Before we begin, citizens' comments, I'd like to remind everyone of or state some ground rules for this agenda item, which I, as the chair, would like to just voice as a preface before we begin. Citizens' comments is an opportunity for the board to hear from the public, but shouldn't be a dialogue or debate. I therefore encourage the board members and the town manager to listen to the comments made and make note of those you want to follow up on and/or that warrant further discussion. If it's an item that needs further discussion, we'll put it on an agenda for a future meeting. If it requires follow-up, we can direct the town manager to do so. If the comment doesn't require board discussion at a future meeting or follow-up by the town manager, I would just request that we simply try to say thank you and continue to the next speaker, and then move on to the board's business. I'll try to give everyone the time they need, but we have a full agenda, as we always do. So I'll ask that speakers limit their comments to two minutes. When comments, when public comments are not required, so while public comments are not required to pertain to an agenda item, such comments must pertain to a matter within the public body's jurisdiction. Public comments on matters outside the public body's jurisdiction shall not be permitted. The following comments shall likewise not be permitted: threats, incitement to imminent lawless conduct, obscenities, personal attacks, defamatory statements, and sexually explicit statements. I encourage speakers to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to refrain from verbal abuse upon the character or motives of members of town boards or town staff, the citizens of this community, and/or each other. Thank you. Let's proceed with our first speaker. I remind you, you have two minutes. Is there a speaker online who would like to speak? I'm not really able to read if there are. There's a hand up, but I'm not sure who that is. I see the letter E.
Yeah, it's Ellen Penniman.
Good to hear from you again. You have two minutes.
In that new...
I'm not sure if you're speaking. You've cut out, so we're not able to hear you.
Is that better? I'm unmuted.
Thank you. Yeah, we're able to hear you now. It may be on our side, but we're able to hear you now.
Okay. In that new development that was in the middle of the wetlands, the Klein development, and there was a new road built in off of Walnut Street. On the entrance to that road, we still have, after what must be four or five years, the plastic orange jersey barriers. There's not been anything permanent built. And for example, if you look at Camp and Alley Way, and it was done for an entirely different reason, I understand that, they have these nice stone barriers. But at any point in time, will something more permanent be constructed, or will those temporary orange construction barriers be removed? It's been there for several years, and it's a little bit of an eyesore on Walnut Street. Thank you very much. I'm going on mute now.
Thank you very much for your comments. I would just ask that the town manager follow up on that request for information. I believe that I won't, looking not to have too many back and forth, but Mr. Carr expressed that he might have an answer to this question.
The reason, is this on? There we go. The reason why those barriers are there is because the shoulder of the road hasn't been put in yet, because the final, the final work isn't done, so they're trying to keep people off that shoulder area. They won't be, they won't be leaving those there, believe me. That road will have granite that will enter, it'll have a grass strip and a sidewalk. So it's just that the job is lagging.
Thank you so much, Mr. Carrera.
May I ask a follow-up? Is that permitted?
No, you have two minutes to speak, and we're moving on to the next. As I said, it can't be a dialogue. The next speaker was, we have Ms. Walsh.
Thank you. Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. I know a lot of people don't get a real newspaper anymore, but the Boston Globe Magazine on Sunday was honoring the Person of the Year. The Person of the Year was the Boston Celtics team for winning the banner, but they also had some runners-up, and one of the runners-up was Fred Richard. And they had a paragraph, as well as a lovely picture of him and his other teammate from Massachusetts. And they actually said that Fred was from Stoughton, not Greater Boston. And there was a quote by him. So if you got the Sunday paper, dig it out. It's not often that we get such positive feedback.
Thank you so much. Next level, so we're going to go to row two. I think Mr. Banus had a comment that he'd like to make.
I have two minutes.
Mind just giving your name and...
Peter Banus, 41 Walnut Court, Precinct 2. In two minutes, that's tough for me. But first of all, I just would like to say that the New Orleans Sinai Hospital has a security vehicle there now with a flashing light, and I rode up there and asked the guy in the vehicle if he knew what was going on here. He said he really didn't know. So I think the public would kind of like to know what's going on up there. Okay? I just got there and looking at the dictionary, and I looked at the word divisive, and it said, "Creating disunity or dissension. Facebook has ruined many families and many friendships." I think everyone would have to agree with that. Okay? One of the issues that, I have conservative views, and I have loved personal discussions with people, as you all know, okay? Unfortunately, we cannot do that any longer because of politics being such a nasty business. And I think you would all agree with that. I think, you know? It's to agree to disagree is not just a slogan, but it needs to be done in a civil way. Unfortunately, Facebook has ruined many relationships and many families, and personally, it happened to me within this town, and it's a shame. All right? My mom said there's three sides to every story, your side, my side, and the right side. All right? And one of the things, I know when Mr. Calta came here, we had some personal meetings, and we talked about transparency and everything, and I think that's, that's good. I mean, if we want things to be transparent, all right? And the only other thing I want to say, and I don't have Facebook, I saw Facebook room with so many kids at middle school, all right? I'm not on Facebook, but I know people take shots at one another, and there's no way anyone can do anything other than overreact, and people take shots. And I don't know, I don't know what is even said on that. Okay? I really don't know what's said. But I do attend, and I'm undeclared as a voter, okay? I'm undeclared. I do go to the Republican Committee meetings, okay? And I want to tell you that the meetings have a lot of discussion with a cross-section of taxpayers, a cross-section of both sides. I think there's Democrats and Republicans, and it's lovely to have these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Peter Banus.
Yep, thank you very much. I think you know what I'm saying. Thank you. Yep. Happy to...
On the second row, right side, Christine, any interest in public comments? I wasn't sure, sorry. Thought I'd ask. So we've got a third row on my left side or the right side for you guys. Anybody there?
Ms. Roberts, I address you because you knowingly set up Mr. Calta to defame me last Select Board meeting, and that is for the umpteenth time, okay? I now have to stand here and defend myself. This is a breach of code of conduct of the Select Board and the town manager, whose job is to report to you. You knowingly, I say knowingly, because you received, every member of this board received in October, a letter, not only from myself, but from Mr. Peter Ventresco, our beloved 90-year-old statesman, about bullying, yet you said, oh, if there's a concern about bullying, we need to do something about it. You do need to do something about it, okay? Because I stand here before this board and every single taxpayer that I talk to, and I am, my conduct is stellar. I'm professional, I'm respectful, and to be publicly insulted that I don't know what I'm talking about, let me tell you. I was an auditor and a controller, and for those who don't know, a controller is an accountant, okay, that runs a company, okay? It is unacceptable to defame me any longer. Do you got that? Okay? And you, Mr. Kavy, you want to put it in the record? I would like to have on the record those letters in the minutes of this meeting, okay? Because it's unacceptable. I want my letter, and I want it on the record, that I talked to OCPF today and talked about my email is 100% stellar. There is, I have every right to send out an email, okay? You, the resistance, you on one hand, talk out of both sides of your mouth. You want public involvement? I'm involved for one reason only. I have no one working for the town, no aspirations to have any family members work for the town. Respect the taxpayers.
Thank you very much for your comments.
We're here to protect the taxpayers.
Okay, next, is there anybody else in the second row? Mr. Fox. Sorry, I meant third row. I apologize.
Juan Fox.
Just have to turn the mic on.
Juan Fox, 624 Pleasant. Two things. One, I thought this started at 7:30. That's why I'm showing up now. I didn't know it was at 7:00. So, and it may have been discussed earlier, but I'm going to do it again, just in case. The word is, is that the special town meeting is supposed to be happening on the 3rd of February, and that's turned out to be a hardship for a bunch of the town meeting reps, including the town moderator. A lot of these folks are retirees, and they're heading south for the winter, and so when they're coming up in February, if you have it on the 10th as opposed to the 3rd, you'll have a higher attendance. And it would be, it would have been nice to have some, an email go out and ask, and which would be the best time, and it would have said, 3rd would not be the time. The second thing to talk about is there is a bylaw working in progress right now, a noise ordinance bylaw. And what I want to try to do is to make sure that engine braking is included in that bylaw. Engine braking or Jake braking is one of the major causes of noise pollution in town during the day, or at night if they're using it at night. And considering that the, the new truck facility that will be opening up in Precinct 1, my precinct, it's going, they're expecting 250 trucks a day, and that stretched out would be six, you know, a truck every six minutes, 24/7. So having trucks that will be possibly using their Jake braking as they're coming down the, down the road at who knows when, and all hours, is a real problem, and catching it now would be a best thing for this.
Thank you so much for your comments. Just for the record, we haven't yet discussed anything related to the special town meeting. That'll be the last order of business, and there's been no date set yet. As far as the J braking, with regard to that, if you don't mind following up and just making sure that that gets incorporated into at least the analysis of the initial version. Thank you very much. And now we have third row, so yeah, third row, so we have Mr. Lory. As we go further back in the rows, I apologize, my sight, I really seriously need to see a doctor. It's getting harder and harder for me to see, so I apologize if I'm not able to call out the names, but any hands that come up, you're more than welcome to come up and speak. Your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. David Lurie, 18 Robinett Road. First of all, the library is a terrific place for public discourse and freedom of expression and First Amendment rights. Seems like time and time again, some people have an issue with that. I don't understand why, but there it is. The reason I'm actually here is because I used to think that we had a town manager that represented the entire town. As it turns out, ever since June 12th, we've had anything but. We've had a lot of politics stirred up, and it seems like it's been like a pattern over many years in public life, where a town manager feels like they have super-duper powers to be able to do stuff, but they don't. The fact is, is that on June 11th, we had a vote, and it's being ignored for, I don't understand why, because the democracy worked that night. Now, when you look at what happened since, there was supposed to be a policy statement put together. It was outsourced to the Collins Center, and it was going to be brought forth in September, and then it got waylaid because of bylaw, you know, sunset rules, and it's outsourced. I don't even understand why you'd have to waylay something that's outsourced, but there it is. And then it was promised for December, and this is probably your last meeting in December, so I'm not sure how you're going to ever get policies in. Policies protect the taxpayer from overrides and debt exclusions, but there are none in the town. We don't have policies. That means the money that already poured in, there's an extra million on top of the millions that have already poured in, and there's more millions on the way because of the assessment rule that came out last month, so even more millions are coming in as of January 1st. And you don't have any policies that protect the taxpayer. You know, there's only one thing worse than a distressed budget, because you don't have enough funds, and you know what it is? It's when you have more than enough funds, but you're still in distress and have to go to the taxpayer for more taxes. That's worse. You're not looking out for the taxpayers when you let policy decisions go away.
Thank you very much. So on the third row, I think everybody on the left has spoken on the third row, so we're going to go to the right. Thank you for joining us. I'll just press the button on the turn-on. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much for letting me speak. My message is for Select Board. Please, going forward, please, going forward, discourage...
Could you just give us your name and address?
Oh.
I'll start with your time.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's okay.
Marina Lyons, 72 Copperwood, Precinct 7.
Thank you very much.
So I'd like to address my message to the Select members. Please, going forward, discourage any town officials, whether it's, you know, school, any public representatives from, from spreading the fictitious rumors. The last thing we want is just spreading hate, antagonizing people, and creating any, any fights or any wars. Yes, lately, it's been, it's been a thing in Stoughton, and we know that we all fight with each other. So the message from the last Select Board meeting was clearly to blast the resident of Stoughton and to ruin reputation. Nobody is perfect, and we know that. And we're also aware that even, you know, public or town employees are not perfect either, and their reputation is not perfect. Lisa Lyons is a highly intelligent, beautiful, and honest resident. She cares deeply about the Stoughton taxpayers. So as a Stoughton resident and a town rep, I'd like to ask Select Board to refrain town, school, or any committee employees from behaving badly, pushing their own personal agenda or vendetta against certain people. So there have been many instances lately, and we know them, we know them, especially the town reps' meetings as well. So please, stop that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on the fourth row back, and I see, Arnie? I'm starting from the outside coming in. I'm fine with that. I don't have a preference, but welcome, Mr. Ventresco. Just turn the mic on, please.
Press the button, Peter. Okay. There you go.
Good evening. I'm Peter Ventresco.
The microphone's on. I think you just have to point it more towards you, maybe just pull a little closer.
Good evening. I'm Peter Ventresco. I would like to say that Lisa Lyons has done absolutely nothing improper. The reason for the charade is because Lisa Lyons was a witness to a verbal threat made to me by Tom Calta on 3/19/24 and the next night at 3/20/24. He said, "I will destroy you personally," and my show on Smack, in a harsh, threatening voice. This hearing, this, you, Mrs. Roberts, you brought this whole thing up, because if you didn't say what you said at the last meeting, I wouldn't be here. This is all because, on my show on Smack, when I was interviewing with three Select candidates, Scott Carrera, Steve Gavie, and Laura Morris, one question asked each about nepotism. Why did I ask that question? Because we have a whole lot of nepotism here, Stoughton Town Hall, DW, the DW, and other places. Big nepotism by one, Tom Calta, he's got a lot of them here, and Tom Andrew, and one Selectman, Joe McChrisky. I did this because, I did this because widows tell me they have a finance burden with paying taxes going in, going up every year. We cannot stop taxes from going up. Because we have contractual obligations. But we can't hold taxes down by not creating new jobs that did not exist. Nepotism. And also, the letters that Lisa and I sent in here to every board member and to Tom Andrew about what happened...
Your time is up.
I'd like to finish.
No, no, your time is up, but thank you very much. Everybody gets two minutes. Okay, and I think Mr. Feinberg.
Good evening. Arnie Feinberg, Precinct 6. I shouldn't have to say any of this. A Select Board, a Select Board member called out my colleague, and that was unacceptable and disgusting. It was at that meeting, I was at that meeting that she referred to. We did not discuss money, period. It is a well-known fact in those meetings that is not, money is not discussed in the library or any public building. Everybody in that meeting knows it. The Select Board does not represent a yes group, does not represent the no group. You represent the residents of Stoughton, not these specialty groups. You should be ashamed of yourselves for this type of remarks. Stop it! And Mr. Calta, I mean, Mr. Kavy, you have a gavel. The next time they start insulting people like that, the Select Board member who did that should be gavelled, and so should your town manager. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments. So, yeah, there's a lady in the, I think, the fourth row back. Welcome. If you just don't mind giving your name, address, and you'll have two minutes. Sorry, you just turned the mic off. There's a, yep, there you go.
Valerie Cohen, 8 Hunt Drive. I would just like to echo what Dave Lurie said. We need a better financial plan for this town. We're tired of overrides and debt exclusions. It's enough already. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Hello. Sorry. Hello, my name is John Dino. I'm from Precinct 4, and I just wanted to remind the Select Board that they're elected officials, they have a fiduciary responsibility to the health and well-being of the townspeople, the towns' money, and everything that goes on within the town. What I'm hearing is a lot of scuttlebutt about people bullying and stuff like that. To me, it sounds like borderline being criminal. That is not what the Stoughton should be representing in our town officials. We should act civilly and do for the town what we would do for our own home. Keep a budget and stay within that budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And I see Mr. DeFleese, if my eyes are not deceiving me.
Just to change it up a little bit, I've lived here all my life, I think I've said this similarly in the past, and I have never seen such discourse as I have in the last, particularly since this school thing, I guess, the last couple of years, mostly this last several months. And I get the feeling that nobody really cares about the seniors. I turned 80 this year, thank God. I never thought I'd get to this point. All of us in this situation basically are on fixed incomes. Might come to a surprise to you guys and gals, we don't have two working people to afford all these extraordinary buildings, et cetera. So I just feel that this has been going on for some time. We can't even build elderly housing. We haven't done it for years. We've got a very large elderly housing component in our town. And I just feel that we're being crapped on, and I don't like it, because I've been reading some of this stuff, and if you're expressing that financially, a lot of the stuff you can't afford, people come out of the woodwork and say, "You hate children." Who the hell do you think built this town up to this point? All of us, and a lot of us older people that are still around, and we get no respect, as Roger Dangerfield would say. Rodney, I'm sorry. And I'm kind of tired of it. You know, we don't have to be going after each other's throats, but give the elderly of this town a break. We need it. We've got all these expenses, as we all have, from what's been happening over the last four years, prices are through the roof.
Thank you very much.
So let's, let's give the seniors a break in some recognition that they have a problem.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, seeing no one else with their hands up, anybody online who hasn't already spoken, I'll give you another chance, just in case you've shown up. I'll give you another chance, just in case you've shown up a couple of minutes late. Not seeing anybody, we'll move on to the next order of business, which is Select Board comments. And we'll start from my left. Mr. Gino, do you have any comments?
None.
Thank you so much. Ms. Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have several comments. First of all, I would like to revisit our code of conduct. Our code of conduct was developed by all of us. And that means we've implemented, and we expect all of our members of our boards and commissions and committees to abide by it. The issue is, any type of bullying tactics will not be tolerated. The point is, it's all stemming back from the incident with Jana. And I don't typically call anybody by name. And I did not call anybody by name at our last Select Board meeting. But when the incident happened with Jana, I said, and I expressed it, "I will never allow that to happen again without probing more and handling the situation by talking through with two people together talking through." Now, anyone that knows me knows that that is how I operate. And I feel really bad that we did not, as a board, come together, because we really don't have any power in that area. But we do have power in that area when we address a citizen and when a citizen addresses us. We can do things like stop. We can take a breath. We can step away. But bullying tactics will not be tolerated. I mean, that's all I can say with that. And respectfully, I ask that even among us Select Board members, we treat each other with respect. And let's say that we agree to disagree versus hollering or using a tough voice with one another. No one on this board has never done it to me, but I have observed it. So we're all neighbors. We're all neighbors here. We've lived here. I've lived here for 38 years. And I love my neighbors. I love the community. But with that said, let me go to the second comment that I have. And that is regarding, and that was the only comment I was going to make tonight because we were getting ready to go into our budget, further conversations about our budget. And I wanted to say something nice and positive and cheerful, and we're happy and we can be proud of. And that is our Moody's rating. The Town of Stoughton, this is from our website, I mean, the Moody's Ratings website. It says, "The Town of Stoughton, Massachusetts." And they gave us, once again, a double A2 rating, bond rating. And they said they credit our strengths to positive financial operations driven by conservative budgetary practices. And I want to applaud us, Town Manager, FinCom, Director of Finance, her department, and on and on. There are a lot of people that are involved with the development and the stabilization of our bond rating. Now, it does go on to say, "Factors that could lead to a downgrade." One is a significant increase in leverage. So I don't foresee that we're headed in that direction. When I look at all of our budget information that's going to be presented today, I was happy to see some of the policies that were implemented from the FinCom when I was on FinCom. They're being adhered to. When I asked Town Manager, Thomas Coulter, "These are the policies that were used by FinCom, and it's dated in year 2020. What is your take on these?" And Mr. Coulter says, "We are adhering to." If he didn't say all, he said 99%. And I take that as, yes, he is. So I look forward to hearing Elizabeth continue with the budget process tonight and hearing more about our revenue, hearing more about the expenses. And that's the profit and loss statement. And then we can go on with our capital project plan. So thank you very much.
Well, I'd like to make a comment on.
No, sir. The Assistant Comments section of the agenda resolver.
She made a couple of comments that need to be addressed because she's not telling the truth.
Five-minute recess. Good evening, everybody. Called back to order the meeting of the Select Board. This is December 17. The time is 7:54. We're still discussing Select Board comments. And, sorry, I want to make sure. Are you done with comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am.
Thank you so much. Mr. McCrisky, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a very quick one, I think it needs to be brought up, is that for somebody to be accused of nepotism, as I was, you have to be an appointing authority. Select Board members are not appointing authorities other than those that are outlined in the Town Charter. And those are done here. And my vote is only cast with everybody else's. So I cannot be accused of nepotism. I can be, but then that's for people that don't do their homework. Is that the Select Board, the Select Board does not appoint full-time paid employees other than those outlined in the Town Charter. And for me to be accused of nepotism? Do your homework. It's as simple. No, you didn't, because we're not appointing authorities. So you mentioned, I've been mentioned, Mr. Chairman, in a public by a citizen that said nepotism. It involved me. And I don't appoint anybody in my family. If they work here, they got here on their own, and it was not because of my doing. So I just want to make sure that people that are home watching, and they hear these comments, you know, that they know the other side of the story. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Carrera, any comments?
I have none.
Okay. The only comment I have is that this is going to be our last meeting, most likely in December. So we have Christmas and Hanukkah coming up. There's a variety of other holidays as well. And New Year's Eve, New Year's Day. After New Year's, I usually try to give some resolutions, some things I'd like to see accomplished over the next year. And there's a homework assignment, but any members of the board who have some ideas or things they'd like to see in 2025, I would certainly love to hear your ideas. Beyond that, I just want to wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season and a happy new year. The next item on the agenda is Town Manager comments. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments?
Chairman, no announcements, just a few minor points of clarification from previous speakers. I just, first of all, want to assure Mr. Laurie that the drafting of the financial manual is well underway. And the reason for its delay is our financial staff inherited the work that needed to be done from the Sunset Clause, bylaw that Town Meeting passed, and because we're in the process of restructuring the town's entire balance sheet going back two decades. So the finance team was not available to work on the policy. Colin Center is paid 100% by a $30,000 grant from the DOR. But for the record, the financial manual is going to be a how-to to make out a purchase order and so forth. The direction and the guardrails are very clearly stated by the DOR, our outside orders, and the Department of Local Services. Every one of the 351 municipal cities and towns get very clear financial guidance. And I want to assure the public that the guardrails are stiff and that our finance director teaches those guidelines at the MMA conference. The second point I would like to make is in reference to Mr. Ventresco's nepotism statement. I want to say, for the record, I don't have a single member of my family, direct or indirect, cousin, brother, sister-in-law, working for the Town of Stoughton. And I must say, Mr. Chairman, that when lies are told like that, it does raise blood pressure, unsubstantiated on truths. And in the fact that Peter suggested I attacked a 90-year-old man, it takes two to tango. And I wasn't sitting in the audience. I was sitting right here, and he walked by with wise-guy statements. I don't bully people, but I don't back down from bullies either. The last comment I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman, is about Lisa's comments. She claimed that the emails I sent to her about laws that may be broken in the Commonwealth were both slanderous and bullying. If so, I would invite Ms. Lyons to publish those letters to the community. I wouldn't do that to her. But I'd ask that she publish the letters, the advisory letters I wrote to her that she frames as slanderous and bullying. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. So if you're following, if you happen to join our meeting a little bit late, I just want to mention that the next order of business was the water and sewer rates hearing. And that is going to be postponed until, at the very least, our next meeting. Our Water Superintendent wasn't able to attend. He had a personal emergency. Item number six, the interview in consideration for appointment of Town Clerk, also is going to be held at our next meeting. One of our members asked for some additional information, and would like some time to review it. And I think that's appropriate. So our next order of business will be item number seven, which is the fiscal '26 budget presentation. Oh, I apologize. Yeah, yeah, sorry. We had already discussed this. Actually, we're going to move, we're going to do number eight first, which is the annual license renewals. I was confusing, too. Thank you very much. So Assistant Town Manager reminded me that he'd already let me know that we were switching company, to switch a couple of things around. So we're doing the annual license renewals. This is, there's three attachments. And on the agenda, there is a typo with regard to the attachment order. Attachment A is correctly labeled as complete applications. On the agenda, attachment B should be applications not renewed. And attachment C should be applications that are pending, or pending applications. So we'll start off with attachment A. These are completed applications. We'll move through, but actually, we'll let you lead the way, actually. Just before you start, I want to say, I want to thank you guys. I know that in the past, the process for this is always difficult. And I acknowledge that. But I want to thank Kelly. I know this is a lot of work. And to be able to get this done and essentially wrapped up as a Christmas present for all of us by the 17th, it was a tremendous amount of work. And I want to thank you very much for doing that. Thank you.
Assistant Chairman, the question is 8:30. Is this a public hearing?
It is not a public hearing. And a public hearing is not required for the renewal of these licenses. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Tesdell, Assistant Town Manager, with Ms. Kelly. She works in the Building Department, Head of Licensing. We appreciate the kind words. All the credit goes to Kelly and her team working on licensing. As you mentioned, we actually had a pretty good process in place with licensing. But every year, we try to improve it just a little bit better than the previous year. This year, our goal, the end goal for this, was just to get these licenses in front of you now, which we consider earlier than usual, and start the process earlier so that everything, every license that comes to you for a renewal has been vetted and is complete, and you don't have to worry about it. And that's the goal. That's why we're here tonight. We started our process, actually, earlier this year. We started mailings in June. We followed up in July. We've tied in the annual building inspections with our licensing. So if there was an issue with the annual building inspection program, we tied it into licensing, too, because it would be an outstanding issue. Again, we reached out in August, October, and November again. And Kelly, she's really on top of these things. She really digs in. I always hear on the phone, "Hey, I really need you to get this piece of information in, that piece of information in." She works hand-in-hand with Kristen in our office. Kristen's been a huge asset to Kelly, helps Kelly out. And same thing with James. So there's been a big team approach. It's really improved efficiency, you know, with the licensing. Also, I don't want to leave out Matt Repoza. There was probably a handful of licenses as of maybe a week, week or two, that had outstanding code issues that we addressed. We had, we sent Matt Repoza, our Code Enforcement Officer, out to get those issues addressed. So they've all been addressed since Matt's gone out. So in front of you tonight is 116 applications. There's 108 completed applications that we're asking for renewals on. There's seven non-renewals. And then there's one that you might want to just table to the side. It's the Hampton Inn application. We do have multiple departments not recommending renewal of that application for the alcohol license for obvious reasons. With that said, I have nothing else to add. I don't know if you have anything to add, Kelly, if I missed anything?
No.
All right.
Thank you very much. So the first item on this, we'll start off with the applications that have been completed. And in the past, we've read every single license and address, business name, on here. And it's my understanding that all those many hours of reading these things was unnecessary. Is that more or less true? Can we simply vote to adopt or to approve these applications as presented in this package?
For the most part, Mr. Chairman, it is true. You should go through the sort of administrative steps of identifying what you have there and which ones. I don't think you need to read them all. They're all included in your packet. They're all publicly available. They've been posted with your agenda. So that information has been, you know, provided already. So I know it's been your tradition. And if you really, really want to, I won't stop you. But I don't think you need to read them all as long as you identify which ones you're approving and which ones you're tabling and which ones you're taking other action on. As long as the record's clear on that, I think it's sufficient.
Perfect. So, yeah, in the past, I've been trying to break my personal record every year of saying it faster than the year before. But this will be the fastest time ever. So in this case, you know, just correct me if I'm wrong, though, if we mess this up along the way. But we have identified attachment A. This is part of the package for tonight's meeting. It includes all completed applications. It includes Class II licenses, Class III, pawn licenses, club, all alcohol, Sunday entertainment, amusement, common vehicular licenses, all alcohol, beer and wine, package store, lodging house, secondhand shop, pawn shop, taxi, fortune teller. Said my, said somebody's twice. But it covers all of those licenses. Is there a motion to approve the licenses in Appendix A to the package for tonight's meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded.
Is there any discussion?
Okay, sorry. By all means. Sir, all yours.
And you're saying you're using this packet as the whole thing? Or what do you?
So this is only Appendix A? If you're welcome to have this if you'd like. But it's, it was.
No, no, I get, okay, I see. How far is Appendix A? First page or to the blue?
Well, I have one, two, three.
All right, I get, I'll just go with what I have problems with, and then you can figure it out from there. I highlighted number one. I'm assuming, because there's no address to the right of number one, but it says 1450 Washington Street LLC. Is that the address of the place? I have to assume it is, but it isn't listed. Some people can be 1298 Smith Street and be located at Washington Street. So I want to know if that coincides.
Yeah. This may not be helpful, but let me show you what I have.
May I interject? Unfortunately, it was shrunk down to meet the criteria to upload it on the website for the agenda.
I don't have that, so.
I did.
I apologize. Would you mind repeating that?
The spreadsheet was shrunk down enough to make sure that it was uploadable to go to the website to post the agenda. But if you'd like a copy, I have a copy right here. That's correct.
Would you like a copy of it?
You keep yours. I'll just keep questioning. So is 1450 the address that belongs there? All right, so we got that. The next one is Park Street, Apex Autobody. What's the address on that place?
It's 1228.
1228.
What is it, Steve?
1228 Park Street. That's Apex Auto Shop.
1228. And then we have C&amp;J Autobody. I don't know if there's, like, Washington rear for that one, or has it got its. I don't know if there's like Washington rear for that one, or has it got its own?
1264.
1264.
These should be on here, though.
Then I got to go down to number 10, Mr. Chairman. It's the Platinum Car Sales.
1873.
The gentleman that promised us they were going to do everything right, everything right. Did anybody happen to take a ride by that place at all? Did anybody?
Yes.
Joe did. They're supposed to have parking in the front, two rows in the middle, and nothing in the back. The place has been completely paved. There's no drainage structures to control that runoff. They've paved over the, where the wetlands are not supposed to be within reach of the pavement, so the pavement is probably, the whole back line where the cars are, they were told not to do that, and they would have fixed the drainage structures they talked about that was down there. Now you have all this sheet flow. They're over the car limit, and there's nowhere for patrons to park. The place was so jammed up the other day, and they were directing them how to park out front, which they said wasn't to be done. So now we have an out of control Class II that, that we allowed. And we allowed them to have it, and they didn't have all the stuff, and they were supposed to hand in something. I forget what it was. I can't remember, but I do remember that they were going to hand something to us. So they have over pavement, and I think the, Mr. Conlon should go down there and look at it and not cut a deal with them. If it's over where it's supposed to be and not be paved, I want it removed, because there's, there's no drainage in there to control any runoff. And those cars ain't all in there not leaking. They're not, you know, they're all secondhand. There's, there's problems. Then we have to move down to number 17, which is Central Auto Exchange, which used to be, I think it was the old Atlas Car Sales. I, I, and that one is located right, right after National Rentall on the left, just a little bit down the road. It's actually before the Cedar Swamp Puddle that you can see. Concom and zoning passed several degrees of, of control on that place down there. There used to be a post and rail fence. If you drove by, you'd see it going across the property. That was the limit of the cars to be parked. The post and rail fence is nonexistent, and the cars are beyond there down the slope. So that needs to be looked at either by Matt Reposa from zoning and Mr. Conlon again. So I, I, I'm, the board can do what they want, but there's issues there that need, need severe direction from the, from the, the conservation agent. So.
Those are the only two that you, sorry.
Those are the only ones I, I have.
You'd like to pursue?
Question with, on this. Other than, is the alcohol for the Hampton Inn, is that a different discussion, Brian?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait on that. But that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, is that I, I was wondering why the address didn't make it. Now I know that the spreadsheet was brought down. If I had the wide one, we'd be out of those, but the questionable ones are definitely 10 and 17 need to be addressed.
I appreciate you bringing that up. With regard to the departments, I'm sure that they had an opportunity to review this, but I'd like to hear from Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah, nobody had any objections, but Mr. Carrera brought up a good point about the number 10. I can't comment on number 17, because I just don't have the information in front of me, but number 10, over the last few years, they had parking issues. So I think a couple of years ago, we required a parking plan. I think that might have been your recommendation, maybe yours, maybe you teamed up on that one.
They got, they got a bigger issue than that. They're over the car limit that they're allowed to have, and the whole back row was a dirty area to allow for whatever sheet flowed to go across that dirty area, slow down, and not get there. Now we have impervious pavement of 12, 15 feet, and they got the whole back row of vehicles.
So what I was going to lead to is the parking plan, so we could enforce the parking plan. And Matt Reposa's been out there several times the last couple of years enforcing that parking plan, because they haven't complied with it. At the time.
But they keep, they keep selling. They keep coming to us and saying, oh, this guy's going to be the new owner, and then this guy's, they're all intertwined, but they all know what's going on.
We've been out there a lot for code enforcement issues. They've been addressed, but it's taken some work. Also, the sewer connection was one a few years back. They've addressed that issue, because they had the failing septic system. The, the other issue you're talking about with the Concom issues, I'd have to bring that up with J.C. to get more information on that. That's the first time I've heard of that. On 17, again, that's an auto parts place, so they're not supposed to be selling cars. Am I correct?
Yeah, they don't have cars too.
So if they're selling cars, we got a bigger problem?
I might have the address wrong. I'm not sure, but you know which one I'm talking about?
I think I know which one you're talking about.
It's a very tiny spot.
Post and rail fence, like a mounded septic system type thing or some, is it that, a mounded?
I don't, I don't think they have a mounded septic system. I have no idea what they have there, but.
Yeah, I think I know what property you're talking about.
Post and rail fence ran at a diagonal, because the wet, you'll see where it goes down, and that's where the bottom of the wetland is.
I don't think it's this one.
All right. And I get the address, but I couldn't find the address in here, because when I drove by, I couldn't see the address either.
It's all in that area.
Yeah. So that, you know, that's, that's the one. You can't miss it. It's, I'm trying to think exactly. I know it's after suburban insulation on the left there.
I can't think of the address or the name, but I know what, what property you're talking about.
We do have G.I.S.
We do. We can pop it up right now and figure it out.
We could just find the answer to that.
We could find it out right now.
See that? It takes the old guy to put us all to shame.
He's, he's a pretty smart fellow over here.
Yeah, he's, he's first rodeo. With regard to this license, you know, I sort of want to give a proposal, but I'd actually just rather, I think it's probably more appropriate to ask. Would you like to move forward with approving this license? Would you like to hold off on approving these two licenses until there's been a more thorough investigation? Or would you like to approve them and then have an investigation in code enforcement?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I want to see just that. All right, we all know, I've been questioning all these auto dealers that come in. I've made this statement several times. They come in, a lot of them don't respect the community. They make their rules as they go along. And this one here, in addition, you know, the furthest one down, also had the issue that we had brought up, that a stone wall that separates the property from a very old cemetery in the town. They said that they would repair that, because there was a bus that was parked beyond the wall, because they knocked the wall down when they backed the bus into it, and it'd never been fixed. So, you know, I don't, we don't owe these licenses to people. These people honor the licenses that are issued to them through us on behalf of the residents of Stoughton. And this is our responsibility to make, if we were talking about a restaurant, which we've done in the past, we've said, no, if you don't have your common vixen, we can't approve it. You're out of business on the 31st. But we're going to let these slide? No. I want to see these people, I would like to have them come back into here, into the office, and find out why they went above and beyond what their license allowed. I may not want to give them a license again. You know, I would tend to think I have to under the law, but again, if you make a commitment before a governing body of a city or town, in our case, the town, you keep that word to the residents of Stoughton. So, you know, and it's, it's even bad that, that our town staff, whether it's Matt or J.C., we should not be babysitting these people. They've got other work to do, you know, and so I would not, I will not be voting for them. So if Scott wants to make a motion to table them until we have some kind of resolution, I have no problem with that.
An alternative, which, you know, I'll entertain whatever motions you want to make, but I would say that, that not renewing a license without an actual investigation might be problematic. And so renewing the license, putting them on notice, letting them know that, that we would, that we are going to have an, this is, they are going to be regularly investigated over the course of this year. And next year, we are going to have them separated out and see and compare their, their compliance with.
Well, I'd be looking for something, with all due respect, Steve, I'd be looking for something a little tougher than that, because they gave their word to this board. Now, if, if that's the case, we reissue, we approve it, but I would make a motion for hearing immediately that we would take the license. So that's it. We could renew it, and then I will make the motion that we have a hearing on the license. Bring them before us, find out what happened, then, you know, if they don't get it resolved within a specific period of time, which gives, you know, Mark's departments the time to go down, do the inspection, get a report to us, and then find out how long it's going to take them, you know, to do this. If not, we pull the license then.
Okay.
I mean, I'm all for due process. I'm all for transparency, but I'm also for, you know, keeping your word, you know, and I'm really tired of seeing these places pop up and grow right under our noses, you know, and, and believe me, I can almost bet money, I call Matt more than anybody, saying, hey, you got to go down here, you got to go down there.
Just for the sake of not endangering anybody else's license, I would like to just entertain a motion to separate number 10 and 17 from the rest of the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
We gotta, we gotta find out if 17 is the right address. Mark's going to look that up.
Yeah, so just for the sake of like this one vote of, of passing, whatever we know is good, the motion is to separate 10, 17 out.
What I was going to add to Mr. McCriskie's, if, if I understand, there could be a problem holding it up, to an extent. But I think we got to get him in here, sit him down, and get them to admit what they done. Once they admitted that they paved and all that, then we can, we can draw up what we got to do on them.
Sure. Mr. Chair, if I may, just on the, on the address, are we sure that it is 1152? Are we sure of that? I'm still, I'm looking at my computer right now. I have an aerial view, satellite view of the property, and I want to make sure that we're talking about the same one, because 1152 is not the place that Scott and I are referring to.
Mr. Chairman, is it, is it doable that Jilda can project that?
It comes up right here.
And the, this original comment I was going to make is, I feel uncomfortable.
What's this building here?
Of tabling item number 17, when we're unsure if that's really.
Yeah, I was just still looking to separate it from the vote, so we can then address it separately and independently and vote everybody else.
We can pull it up?
Yeah. We'll give them a moment to decide if, if they're talking about the same property.
Do you want to take an official break?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess, just let, let, let everybody get a chance to pull the facts together. I'll see you guys in five minutes. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We're going to return to the, the meeting of December 17th. It's 8:27. There was a question about two, two licenses and what, how we want to proceed. There's already a motion to approve all of them. We can continue with that. We can make a motion to separate two or one license right now and go along with the rest of them, and then have a separate discussion about this remaining one or or two.
I think, Mr. Tisdale, and I can see Brian agrees with the same idea, that we're going to approve them and then address the issues through Town Hall by, and then maybe forcing them to come in here, and we'll give them our views on what they said they were going to do on their license. Is that all right?
But well, that has, so, two things. One, the board didn't deliberate on that, but if that's your recommendation, I'm happy to oblige, and, and we'll, we'll move forward with, with that. That we'll, we'll start by simply approving, voting on the licenses as it stands, and then if, if we have specific licenses that people would like further information about, we'll have a public hearing. We'll invite them in. We'll, we'll follow the, all of the, the rules that we have to follow.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a motion on the table, and it was seconded.
Yes. Yep. So the motion is to approve all applications that, that appear in the attachment A, completed applications. So all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Mr. McCriskie's off over there.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, attachment A, these licenses are all approved, and, and we'll start signing those things. I'm not looking forward to that. Next thing we have is attachment B. This was mislabeled on the agenda, but the attachment is.
Are we going to, are we going to somewhere another, instead of we're going to those two people?
Sorry, you have to turn your microphone on. Turn your microphone on. People aren't able to hear you, sir.
Are we going to make a motion to call those people in so that we can get that, that part of, of this discussion finished? Or are we going to do that at the end? Are we going to wait for some other time?
My, if someone makes, makes, someone makes a motion, we'll follow through with that. My assumption was that, that we would work through the, through Mark's department to, to identify the facts, await a recommendation, and then, and then move forward that way.
At the end of this piece here?
At some point, so they're going to start investigating.
Mr. KB, Mr. McCriskie handed me some information that says that the one that I had questioned with about the fence, that that's going to be rectified within the next few days to comply.
Okay.
So that, that one we won't have to visit. It's Platinum Auto Sales that we'll rely on. Mark, do you want to, when you get the info, you'll tell us when?
We'll do a full, a full code investigation on that piece of property, permitting, all that, and we'll come back with any non-compliance issues.
Is that, is that good enough, Mr. Gito? At least we'll have information to go by. We won't just have them sitting here and us pointing fingers at them.
Yeah. So, so unless there's a stiff emotion, what I'll be doing is asking Mr. Tisdale to begin an investigation on, I believe it was Platinum Car Sales at 1873 Washington Street, provide the board with some facts regarding their operations, and if the board chooses to, to have a separate public hearing to address those, then we'll schedule that. Does that work for everybody? Okay. Joe, I know you're not feeling well, but are you going to be able to remember that? I'll try to remember it as well. But we'll, we'll, we'll launch, launch that. Okay, so the, back to the next item, it's attachment B. This is applications not, not renewed. We don't necessarily have to read this. There's no app, there's no vote, but I just want to point out that the application B does include a relatively short list of businesses that have chosen not to renew their license. And finally, with regard to this list, we have Inholder Alcohol. This is Hampton Inn at Cabot Place Suite 5. And there's a mention of, of additional backup. It says C letter, but I, but the backup itself that we have online didn't have a letter. But I will, Mr. Tisdale, all yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the one application where we had several departments not recommending approval for this application. We had Border Health, Building, and the Police Department all voting against it. The, the address is actually 445 Page Street, I believe. I think I heard a different address read.
Yeah, I was reading off of what I have here, which, which I'll.
What is it, Kelly?
445 Page.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
And this particular application, again, it's, it's been operating as a shelter. The general gist of the comments all gel together, from our Building Department to Police to Border Health, it's, it's operating as a shelter. There's no need for an all alcohol license at this facility at this time. They're welcome to come back and apply for in the future if they change to a hotel again, but at this point in time, it's a shelter.
Okay. So, yeah, the, the address listed on the package that I have, and also it's online, is incorrect, but you, the address, could you just repeat the address?
445 Page.
445 Page, Hampton Inn. The recommendation of the departments is to not renew. They're currently operating as a shelter, not as a hotel. And so having an alcohol license at a shelter, you know, I think most of us might agree that, that is not fitting for that, for that use. But, but I'll entertain any motion. It could be a motion to take no action. But, but I'll entertain any motion, could be a motion to take no action, to, to approve, to not approve, all you.
Motion not to approve the alcohol for 4...
445.
5 Page Street Hampton Inn.
Okay, so it's a motion to not approve the license, all, this is an Inholder Alcohol License for Hampton Inn.
Correct.
Second.
At 445 Page Street. Made, the motion was made by Mr. Crer, and seconded by Mr. McCrisky, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to not approve the license?
Aye.
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 Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that for alcohol license, they're generally automatically renewed unless the board takes affirmative action to not do so, which they need to do at a public hearing. So you can take action on this, just so that you've, you've made your statement and expressed what your intent is, but I would recommend that you follow up with a notice for hearing and give them an opportunity before you, in fact, you're essentially revoking the license.
I was gonna make that, but I didn't know if that was appropriate, but that was gonna be the first thing out of, I wanted to revocate.
You need to take that step, and I think you should take that step next, and give them the opportunity to object if they wish to, and make whatever statement they wish, but they have a right to appeal this, and so they, they're entitled to a public hearing to hear the reasons why you're taking the action you are.
Okay.
You gonna make that motion?
Just before we go into that, I do wanna ask, if, if they're automatically renewed, then what do we do in here? Why was this even before us?
Because that's gonna get merged into your, your hearing to revoke.
Okay.
And so, it would be, was it, it's supposed to be automatically renewed under the statute. That being said, you're about to notice a hearing to consider revocation of the exact same license.
Okay.
So we're gonna end up in the same spot, and so they're gonna have a decision which will be appealable if they wish to contest it, and so I think ultimately their rights are gonna be protected because you're gonna give them that hearing.
Perfect.
And the opportunity to appeal, so I think it would be a little, not, not disingenuous, but a little bit awkward to allow the automatic renewal to proceed without making the statement you just made, and then turn around and revoke it the next week, if that's what the board decides to do after a public hearing. And so I don't, I think that statement's fine, but I don't think it's legally effective until you've had your public hearing, which it sounds like the board's willing to do.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So is there a follow-up motion?
Do you want me to revocate it? Or what is it? I didn't hear.
So it's just a motion to, to have a, have a hearing, send a notice of hearing to the Hampton, correct me if I'm wrong, but have a notice of hearing to...
Not, not vote to...
Just turn the mic on.
So attorney, wouldn't, my motion shouldn't, shouldn't go, you want something, what do you want?
No, I don't think, I'm not asking you to change your motion, and I didn't interrupt it, because I think you're entitled to make the motion that the board thinks is the appropriate motion. My suggestion is that it's not legally effective to revoke their license until you've held the public hearing.
Right, that's why I said...
The next step, which it sounds like the board's willing to take.
That's why I said not to approve it, then they get the chance, and then on that day we'll revocate it.
That's right.
Okay, so is there a motion to, to hold a public hearing to, to discuss this license?
Do it after the holidays, or do you wanna do, okay, you figure it out from there.
Yeah, we have to, we'll have to post it, so it'll be a little bit of time.
You want the motion now, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
For the January 7th meeting?
No, it's, we're gonna have to post, it's gonna be a little while, I don't, I don't know how long it's gonna take, but...
And the address again?
445.
So I make a motion to 445, that we have a public hearing to consider the revocation of the alcohol license currently being exercised at 445 Page Street, the, is it the Hampton Hotel, Hampton Inn Hotel? That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, unanimous, so we'll have a public hearing, we'll work out a, a date for that in the next, the next couple of meetings, and move forward with, with that, that public hearing. So that wraps up the, the licenses, and once, before you head out, I wanna thank you again for the work that you've done, and I hope you have a wonderful holiday, you've definitely, you've definitely earned it, so thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Tisdale, as well.
Thanks, Cal.
Okay, so we'll circle back, now we're gonna look at the fiscal '26 budget presentation, which we have listed here as Mr. Tisdale, but I think it should probably be Ms. Luskey.
I think they're doing it together.
Ah.
Do you like our heating system? I like our heating system, it's nice and warm, just hot as hell in the summer, it's a hot handle. This is what it's...
I froze the last three minutes. I don't have any, I don't have any more skin on. All these days, I'm wearing a layer of dress, and a t-shirt.
Before we begin, while you guys are still putting it together, you know, I'll just mention that we have, so we're receiving the town manager's budget tonight. The, our town charter requires that the town manager submit a budget by December 31st, and it's December 17th, so we've got about 13, 14 days early, and once he presents it to us, hands it to us, it's, it becomes the select board's budget, and we will probably have to spend some time considering it, looking at it, if we, if we make decisions about things we wanna change, the opportunity to do that will, will be at our next select board meeting. So everyone will have an opportunity to do their research, provide recommendations for any changes, make motions to make those changes. The one condition that I ask is that if you ask for increases in any budget, that you also provide a source of funding for that, whether it be an offset from, from some other line item, or some other revenue source, so that we are not just adding to the budget, but actually keeping, maintaining a balanced budget, so that's, that's my one request. Other than that, sir, ma'am, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, you read my opening paragraph, so I can move on to some commentary. Although I'm not surprised, I, I will say, Mr. Chairman, I'm a bit disappointed that the audience that's been here most of the evening couldn't hang around for such a, a positive budget forecast, that's, that's a bit disappointing. Mr. Chairman, on October 15th, we submitted proposed budget guidelines for FY '26 to the board for your consideration. This evening, we'll provide a macro overview of the budget before you, and as you stated, we won't get into detail because you deserve ample time to review the budget and ask as many questions as you want. We will make amendments based upon the board of this, the vote of this board, so that the board may transmit its budget to the fire, FinCom as required by our charter. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to take a second to introduce the budget team, who worked for probably 10 full days analyzing every single line item in this budget. Mr. Tisdale, the Assistant Town Manager, Elizabeth Seleski, the FinCom and Town Accountant, excuse me, the Finance Director, the Town Accountant, Deanna Chesko, HR Director, and Trish Shropshire, IT Director and Facilities Manager. The overriding FY '26 budget strategy is to make the budget format more readable, more user-friendly, more transparent, and well-footnoted, and the well-footnoted is very important. Wherever there were major deltas, major increases for the benefit of the board, of the Finance Committee, and of Town Meeting members, the print will be bigger, the files, the columns will be thinner, and the footnotes will be abundant. Our standard is that we wanted the budget to stand on its own, even if we weren't there to answer questions, and so I hope we meet that standard on your behalf. Further, our goal for the FY '26 operating budget was to do more with fewer employees, fewer FTEs, and we accomplished that goal. To balance the budget without the use of free cash or one-time, one-time revenue, we accomplished that goal as well. Third was to generate surplus revenue for municipal operations, and to use that, what we used to call free cash, to minimize the debt needed to fund our capital plan. So, most of the capital equipment, fire trucks, police cars, a backhoe that you'll see in our capital plan, which is in your package, we will pay for with surplus oper, surplus cash from operations. Third, our next goal was to continue providing professional development for employees, particularly those in DPW, we call that retraining, accounting, assessing, and in the clerk's office. Fifth, to begin the process of succession planning, you may not have noticed, but Biz and I are on the back end of our career, and likely will be retiring in the next three years. There are half a dozen others, perhaps, possibly Reggie, absolutely Deanna, in the next three to three and a half years. So Mark and I have been speaking constantly about succession planning and what we need to do to make sure that there's a smooth transition. And finally, to clean up the town's balance sheet within 24 months. I've said it before, I'll say it now, it will come up during the hearings, our balance sheet, business going back over two decades, back into the 90s, to reclassify, repost, clean up the balance sheet, which was in very difficult shape. I will like to, I would like to congratulate Town Meeting, and especially Peter Murphy, it was that effort that he initiated that caused us to look into corners and pockets that we would not have got to this sooner. But to the question earlier as to why we didn't begin the financial document earlier, the entire financial staff has been working, has been working on the sunset clause and cleaning up the balance sheet, and that will continue for a year or two to come. So with that, Mr. Chairman and, and members, I'd like to go to the first document in your package, and what this is, is the, a restatement of the October 15th guidelines that you voted, that we presented and you voted, and then a December 17th update. So for the interest of time, and I know I'd rather read them so that the public could hear them, so I'd ask you, Mr. Chairman, and the members, would you like me to read the guidelines and then the update, or just the update for number one? I'll do whatever you choose.
Let's hear the guidelines.
You'd like to hear the guidelines?
Yes, sir.
So if you don't mind, because I'm losing my voice and Biz is losing her, I'm gonna ask Mark to read the guidelines, and I'll give the update, if you don't mind.
Do you mind, Mark?
No.
All right.
If I may, Mark?
Yeah.
For the public, these guidelines were proposed by the budget team as we began to draft and create the FY '26 budget for submission to the select board. The select board gave their affirmation for these guidelines with an affirmative vote, and so we built the budget around these guidelines. Mark will recite them.
Okay. All right, number one, revenue forecast. Local receipts, motor vehicles, hotel, meals, interest earned, Medicaid reimbursements, permitting, and license fees shall be budgeted, budgeted at 90% of the FY '24 actuals. Chapter 70 and SOA shall be budgeted at 100% of the FY '25 actual receipts. Should actual school, school aid exceed FY '25 levels, the school department will have full access to those additional funds. Cherry sheet revenue less offsets shall be budgeted at 103% of the FY '25 actuals. Please note, new growth is expected to be 5% greater than FY '25.
Let me read the update.
Okay. So where the update is on this, FY '26 new growth is budgeted at $800,000. The new spike in FY '25 is driven by the expiration of TIFs. So the 1.7 that was presented by Biz last week is for this current year, and we're budgeting $800,000 for FY '26 new growth. It is a very conservative number, but the whole budget we're preparing is a fairly conservative budget. I would also like to point out that we're in active negotiations with the governor and her staff right now, we have not received Q1 payments for room tax, I've been assured that we will be kept hold, I've, I've been assured by the members of the legislature it'll be a supplemental budget, so that number is in here, but I would, I would put it at somewhat at risk, and we've footnoted that in the budget to you. The second guideline.
Number two, FY '26 operating budget increase. The Stoughton Town Manager recommends a 3.8% bottom-line budget for municipal operations. Guidance from the Stoughton School Department is not currently available, but is anticipated before the select board's October 15th meeting. Detail will be provided to the board at that time.
I'm pleased to report, Mr. Chairman, the FY '26 budget increase for the municipal departments is 3.62.
Number three, cost of living adjustments. The town manager proposes a 3% COLAR for employees who are not subject to an employment contract, collective bargaining agreement, or who are not otherwise eligible for the increase in FY '26. Employees hired after December 31st, 2024, shall not be eligible to receive a COLAR for FY '26, effective July 1st, 2025.
Thank you, Mark. As indicated, the cost of living increase budgeted for FY '26 is 3%.
Four, health and liability insurance. Health insurance shall be, shall be budgeted for a 4% increase. All other general liability policy, policy shall be budgeted for a 10% increase in FY '26.
Again, Mr. Chairman, as indicated, health insurance in this FY '26 budget is set at 4% the increase.
Number five, full-time employees, FTEs, as they're called. Municipal government agrees to a net zero change, change in budgeted full-time employees, FTEs.
Thank you, Mark. The municipal government workforce shall be reduced by four FTEs in this FY '26 budget.
Number seven, use of free cash. It is the intention of municipal government to use zero free cash in the FY '24 operating budget. Approximately $300,000 in annual free cash is generated by the school department from Medicaid reimbursements. Actual Medicaid collections, oh, thank you, actual Medicaid collections up to $300,000 shall be available to the school department to use in its capital budget. The remaining certified free cash is generated by municipal government departments. That full balance shall be used at the discretion of the municipal departments in support of its capital needs.
That's the update.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, there's no free cash used to balance the municipal, municipal operating budget or enterprise funds.
Okay.
You can use that.
All right. Number eight, regional schools. The regional school in Norfolk Aggie allocations are budgeted at 100% of the actual FY '25 assessment.
What number? As indicated, regional schools in Norfolk Aggie have been budgeted at 100% of actual FY '25 assessment.
Number nine, Norfolk County Retirement. The Norfolk County retirement expense shall be increased by 5%.
Mr. Chairman, as stated...
Capital plan. The municipal and school capital plan shall be merged by July 1st, 2026.
Mr. Chairman, that's our plan as directed by Superintendent Biede to have their budget merged with ours by '26, but in your package is our current FY '25 capital plan, meaning the municipal departments.
26, yeah.
Thank you. For 26, I'm sorry.
Number 11, OPEB liability. The FY '26 budget shall include $100,000 contribution to the town's OPEB liability to show serious commitment to the town's OPEB obligation. The Chief Financial Officer recommends an annual deposit of $100,000.
Mr. Chairman, the budget is as stated.
12, CBA agreements. Expiring CBA agreements must be executed, excuse me, approved by the select board and delivered to the Finance Committee by December 31st, 2024, in order to be considered at the annual town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, all but the, with the exception of DPW, the expiring contracts have all been settled, Thea and the library will be presented to the FinCom by December 31st. You've already ratified them.
By December 31st. I think I'm just gonna move to something sort of...
No, I know, we have a, we have a requirement to submit it by that date.
13, retirement buyouts. $100,000 shall be budgeted in the, the Human Resources Department for municipal employees' retirement buyouts. It is expected that the total buyouts in excess of that will be withdrawn from the town reserve account under the stewardship of the Town Finance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, because we have not been notified, we have not been notified of planned FY '26 retirements, we have not budgeted for retirement buyouts. We thought it would be irresponsible to budget it and pad it when we don't have any knowledge that anybody's retiring, and that's why we'll be relying upon the FinCom reserve account should we receive a sudden notice of retirement.
Number 14, use of stipends. Stipends shall be used in an effort to avoid hiring of additional benefited employees. If a stipend is to be paid, an analysis of the cost savings must be provided in the budget notes. provided in the budget notes.
The strategic use of stipends allows your municipal departments to do more with fewer people, which represents shared staff resources. I do want to note here, excuse me, that in the budget, we are still gathering backup comparisons and writing the narratives for those stipend positions, so we'll have those to you within a few days, so that you have the two weeks to review the backup.
15, shared joint costs. The munis software hardware and batteries currently paid for out-of-the-school and municipal departments shall be reclassified from the school and municipal departments into the joint shared cost accounts.
Mr. Chairman, through agreement with the school committee, no action is anticipated in FY 26 operating budget with respect to shared costs.
Number 16, accounting cleanup directive. The FY 26 municipal budget expenses for school resource officers and crossing guards shall be reclassified from municipal department budgets to the school department budget as recommended by the town's chief financial officer.
Again, Mr. Chairman, in collaboration with the school committee, we've decided not to make those adjustments this year. That, of course, is your decision whether you wish to stick with the guidelines, but that's the agreement we made with the school committee, subject to your vote. Any questions on the budget guidelines and the update from the board through you, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions on the guidelines? Thank you very much for, for, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
All yours.
Thank you so much for allowing me to ask a question. One is economic development. Now, I think that is a department of one, and some residents have said to me that they've seen in other organizations that they, oh, sorry, thank you, thank you. I was wondering what was wrong with the microphone. Okay, I'll start again. Residents seeing that the small department equals the amount of effort we're putting into economic development. So thus said another way, if the department was larger, had more FTEs, then there would be examples of more economic development. I have seen growth with the various new opportunities and new revenue sources that are coming in, and we still have only one economic development. So if you had funding and could hire another FTE, would that equate to more economic development?
Thank you, Madam Roberts. That's a great question. I picked that up from Mark. That's a great question. Actually, we have a very large economic development staff. Mark is involved with that a significant period of his time. Bill, of course, a significant part of his time. And we've got the most significant economic development engine I'd ever seen in Selectman McCrisky in bringing new businesses to this town and generating tax revenue. So we collaborate. What Pam is, she herds us cats. But there's a lot of, you're involved with economic development in the way you're expanding the VNA throughout Norfolk County, which, by the way, that plan that you developed just created an opportunity, an opportunity, an award of $170,000 grant for our VNA. So a lot of people, including this board, are involved with economic development, but Pam does an extraordinary job of coordinating our assets.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you for asking.
And thank you for really telling the audience about the expansion of the VNA. Thank you very much. The other, the animal shelter, we had talks last year about assessing what we could do better for our animal shelter. That may fall under capital item because it's over. I think, I can't remember what our threshold is. It might be 50,000.
25,000.
Is it 25,000? 25,000 and greater equals a capital improvement item. So will we talk about that later?
Well, what Mark has done is bring discipline to the staff. If it's not in the five-year plan, we don't consider it. They don't get to think about it at the last minute, if you know what I mean. There was a request for air conditioning to be installed at the animal shelter, and I love my dog, but it didn't make the cut, primarily because, it would not have made the cut even if it was in the five-year plan, because we're so stretched for real, absolute necessities in this capital budget. But we are taking steps to put a portable air conditioner in the animal shelter for this coming summer, and that will make a big difference. It'll lower the temperature. But back to the original point, and I commend Mark for this, our five-year capital plan is shaping up as an extraordinary document, where everything is rated, everything is costed out, and it goes back five years. And if you've got a department head that shows up at our capital budget hearings and said, "By the way, I need a new truck," and it's not in the five-year plan, it's turned down. And it's turned down because the person's not cooperating. And Scott, I told him if they buy the backhoe you don't sign off on, we're not buying the backhoe. So through Mark's leadership, we've got extraordinary hold on our capital plan. And again, another great question for the public to hear.
If I could build on that, it's not an exact no. I mean, if you bought a new truck two years ago and nothing blows up on the highway, and it wasn't in your capital plan, we're going to consider that truck. It's an unforeseen situation. So for unforeseen situations, that would not be built in the capital plan, because how would you know?
Right. Well.
That's what we talked about, and it's great to put a capital plan on a piece of paper. It's just like an engineer.
Working document.
Everything looks good until it's given to the contractor and you look at the yard and you go, yeah, nice. But it's always moving, the capital plan. Some things will jump a priority status, and something will have to be pushed to the side. So people got to understand that it's not a five bullet we're going to follow. That's it.
We've been educating the department heads that the first year or two should be pretty locked in pretty well. You should kind of know what you need this year, obviously, and next year. Then after that, it becomes like a fluid document. It's made to move and shift depending on the town's priorities and funding in place at that time. Again, and we have ranking. We have ones, threes, and fours. So, I mean, based on available fundings, we might just do ones this year. If we have an extra one-time allotment of money, I mean, you might want to do ones, twos, and threes. So it gives you some flexibility. There'll be one column where the department head actually ranks what their item is, and then we have our capital plan task force also rank it based on the information we're given. So that'll be rolled out soon. It's being updated as we speak from last year's plan.
Just to clarify one point from Mark's remarks, and the reality is that if a truck engine blows up and we want to replace it, Biz does say no. No, we're not doing it. And then Mark and I double teamer and we often get our way.
I would like to clarify that. I only say no when they don't give me their funding source.
Fair enough. Members, if you could go to the title FY 26 budget presentation, Town Manager Budget Goals and Objectives, I believe it's the fourth page in. And again, I'm not going to go to all the bullet points on this. There's probably 15, but I'd like to go to the major ones that you and the public may find to be new. As we've already said, this FY 26 proposed balanced budget has no use of free cash or one-time funds, and that was one of our primary goals for this year. We in the right page? Okay. The second one I want to make out is the consolidation and reduction of splitting FTEs to provide better transparencies. Rather than using EEs, we split them into, if they're in water and storage, we split them down the middle, and then we footnote that so it's apparent to everybody reading the budget. The next one is there are no subsidies from the general fund for the VNA, the water department, the sewer department, or Cedar Hill enterprise funds. They're all structurally solvent. The next item is cross-functional staff assignments, i.e. Select Board admin and shared procurement. As we've done for the third straight budget in a row, we've asked employees who feel they're underutilized and have the capacity to do more to work in two departments. So the person will be hiring in the Selectman's Office, reporting to Jilda, will report their halftime and report in procurement the other half. So in the process, we're reducing one FTE. We've got examples of that through the budget, which have netted a four-person reduction in FTEs. The next point I discussed already is succession planning for department heads is a major objective over the next several years. Two more points on this page. We're making reasonable projections for labor negotiations are budgeted. So in HR, there was a Facebook post today that general government up with 11%, and that's really reclassifying other parts. For instance, we're adding in, for the first time, reasonable expectations of the last DPW contract that's to be sold, as well as those that need to be funded by town meeting. In addition to that, we have moved the wellness position over from police and fire to HR. So that expense falls in there, and therefore it falls into general government. That justifies the increase to 11%. The wellness program has gone very well, to the point that town employees want to be involved, and so we're expanding it to all town employees as well. Next bullet is restructure, restaff, training, and succession planning for the town clerk's office, the assessing, the finance, human resource, DPW, and police. Why is DPW in there? At the solid waste presentation information session, we announced that we would be purchasing no more backend loader trucks. There will be a single side loader used in the next five years in response to the national solid waste disposal crises we're facing. That's going to minimize the member on the truck from three to one. So we've made a commitment to that union that no one will be laid off. We've asked them which trade they would like to pursue, and we will provide the retraining so that they can remain with the town of Stoughton. If you'll please go to the next page.
Before you do, I just want to make sure that if anybody, members of the board have any questions about what we've just gone over on this page. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. The youth program that we used to have, is that still in existence? Because it was under, it was housed on Rockland Street under, I think, under the nurse public health area, went up to Janice Bruce, but I know she's gone, so Janet Gremmons now. But I didn't see it listed here, so.
There's a youth commission that falls under the directive of the Matthew Kochan, no, I didn't pronounce it. Kochan, as through our recreation department.
It's in recreation now? Okay. It's probably been there for?
A number of years.
Number of years.
Yeah, I think it's actually what, human services?
Human services.
It's under human services. Thank you very much.
Any other questions on that first page? On the ones I pointed out, all the others are passed over.
Thank you very much.
On the second page, one of our primary goals for this year is to build the community center. Again, with help from Pam and with help from Joe and writing a grant, we've received $2 million from the Commonwealth, and we plan to begin construction by March 1 and be done in time for Christmas with its floor-to-ceiling remodeling, complete with HVAC, drywall, new wiring, new windows, new doors, everything to host 105-person reception. Next is the third item there, consolidation of highway, fleet, and parts of rec department into DPW department for better transparency and mismanagement, excuse me, management of all public works functions, salaries, expenses, and FTEs. There were so many departments in DPW that had relevant, that used the same staff for everything. It made no sense to break them out and then assign people a quarter of their time there, quarter of a time there, quarter of a time there. So we put them, so the first year, and it created, by the way, it created great angst with members of the community thinking, what are they trying to pull over on us? So as I said in the first page, one of our primary objectives is transparency and a more easier approach to reading the budget. So the first year may be difficult, but the second year, it'll be much easier to read the budget. And quite frankly, those are some of the priorities that Biz and I and Mark are trying to get done. So when you do have a brand-new team here, it's all been laid out, it's all crystal clear, and it makes perfect sense. The next item is down below, prioritization of infrastructure projects for FY 26 capital. We will once again in the fall go before the legislative body and ask them if they wish to continue to replace main water lines and repave streets. It's not something we take for granted. It's something we hope the town will continue to do, but that will be up to the town meeting, but it is one of our goals. Next one, preventive maintenance for all town buildings. Folks, this is a 130-year-old building, and it's, in my view, like new. It's very comfortable. It's well-maintained. Our goal, under the leadership of Paul Jafun, supported by Trish, who is also now a head of facility maintenance, is to build an entire, it's almost done, an entire facility maintenance plan with service contractors, dates for service, maintenance, repair schedules, and then to coordinate that with Mark and the capital plan, the five-year capital plan. We will have the best maintained buildings for its age of any municipality, municipal government in this Commonwealth. Last and most importantly, I think it should have been number one, continued corrective restructuring of town financials, including implementation of the sunset bylaw and closeout of more than 300 obsolete accounts. That's what Biz has been working on six, seven days a week. The good news is, as she close out the count, we don't lose cash, we pick up cash. So it's a worthy, it's a worthy cause. And again, over the next two years, it'll leave the town with a set of documents, balance sheet, and income statements that are clear to read, easy to understand, fully balanced with all the proper journal entries and journal adjustments. If you go, are there any questions on that page, folks? Thank you. If you go to the next page.
May I send questions in?
Certainly. Biz, you've got the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter, to the members of the board and the audience. Some of the budget issues that we're discussing tonight are things that could go up or down in this budget, the likely changes that we could have. One of them is the school department budget, which we had estimated 3.8%, and I believe that Mr. Coulter has already touched on that budget. They may have a variable that we don't know the total figure yet, so we're watching that. State aid, we should have our estimates in early February. Typically, it's in January, but early February will be the first estimates, which are the governor's estimates. Any fluctuations down from what we've projected could have an impact on budgets. As Mr. Coulter already stated, the hotel room state tax reimbursement, that could be a problem. We were guaranteed we would be made whole, and I know that Mr. Coulter and Mr. Kavy plan on keeping the feet to the fire for the governor's office to make sure that we are. Norfolk County retirement contribution was due to us the end of November. However, they postponed that. We now won't have that until the end of January. We did do a 5% projection increase, which may be okay, but again, could have an impact on the budgets as they're being presented. Southeastern Regional Technical School and the Norfolk County Agricultural School, we usually don't get their final numbers until March or April, right before town meetings, so that could be a variable, up or down, like we saw last year. The overall cost went down by, I believe, about $30,000, but it could go up this year. We don't get that until the very end. The MWRA preliminary estimates, that will always change, and that has to do with the water department, water department and sewer department. Anyway, we don't get the final estimates for those typically till August, but we have to put in that projection, so that could be a variable. The water, snow, ice deficit that will have to be raised, that's also based on actuals as far as what happens this year. On the preliminary budget, I believe I put in for $100,000 based on a $71,000 deficit this past year, so we need to watch that. And then union contract settlements, as we had already discussed, those are currently a lump sum dollar value is put into the human resources budget, so we would have the funding to allocate out. And some of those contracts have recently been ratified, so those will be shifting out before your next budget hearing. We'll show you what those shifts are.
Biz, you've got the next chart. Before we change that chart, we shall submit any questions, but I will. Before we change that chart, we shall submit any questions, but I do want to point out, pardon my voice, on the revenue projections, Mark and Biz and I had a conference call yesterday with former Secretary Jay Ash, who's been involved in the state financing model and in this FY '26 budget. They're sending serious caution, not for next year, but for FY '27. And Biz and Mark and I have already begun for FY '27, figuring out what the budget would look like if we have to commit a 2.5% increase in '27. He got assured there'll be no 9C cuts in FY '26, which is a great relief. And last week, Chairman Cavie and I were at the State House meeting with the state auditor and her staff, and she pointed out to us that the legislature had already substantially cut her budget. Usually when they cut state budgets, 12 months later.
It's trickled down.
It trickles down to municipalities. That's a good barometer to go by. So I can tell you, we're very comfortable, as comfortable as we can be, with this budget about 26 revenues. We are already going to start a contingency plan for FY '27 as to how to come in at under 3%. Any questions on this chart for Biz or anybody?
We can go over the revenues if you'd like. They are pretty much the revenues that were presented previously to this board on the estimates in November, I believe. So the property taxes inclusive of our estimated new growth are $85,801,822. I do want to point out that we do go conservative on the new growth, although fiscal '25, we had a $1.7 million increase to new growth. However, $980,000 of that belonged, belonged to TIFs. So that is a one-time revenue that increases our tax base going forward, but our new growth will not be sustainable at $1.7 million. So the $800,000 estimate is what we've been seeing in the past, and that's what we will be projecting. I think it's important also here to note, debt excluded, and debt excluded for both the high school and the fire department, they're part of our budgeting process, and the reason they're part of the budgeting process is because this is money in and money straight back out. This does not impact our budgets, it does only impact the debt in relation to those two debt-excluded projects, but we do have to count for it. State aid this year, typically you would have a net state aid on your budget presentations. However, we found it valuable to do the gross state aid as far as what the town is eligible to receive on different categories. And on the flip side, when you get into the budget, you will see detailed cherry sheet charges and assessments. So you're going to see how much money is the town paying in what category in order to get this money. So we have $34 million that we're getting, but we're also paying out over $5 million. And it's a level of transparency that I don't think Stoughton's had before, and I think it's a valuable tool for the residents and the stakeholders. Local receipts are estimated at $13,159,268, and we are keeping that at the 90% of the prior year revenue receipts from fiscal year '24 in order to keep us at a reasonable amount. The Department of Revenue recommends 80%, however, historically, the town of Stoughton has been doing 95%, which is a very, could be a very serious issue with your budgeting process. You never want to budget up to 100% or even 95% of your projected revenue, because if they do come in lower, you could have a problem. Enterprise reimbursements, these are also known as indirect costs. It's a specific formula that's followed. So when we do indirect costs with the enterprise fund, we pay for their insurances, the health insurances, the liabilities, insurances, et cetera, and they are paying us back for all these things that we provide to them. Title V receipts reserved, that is for Title V septic systems that are still in town, and we are allowed to appropriate out program income, and that's what this represents. So the revenue is $140,298,055. And when we get to the budget expense summary, we have a variance surplus of just over $5,000. But I believe the next part belongs to Mr. Tisdale. Oh, I'm sorry, any questions on that?
Thank you very much, Mel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Biz.
You're welcome.
All right, now we're on to the budget expense summary sheet. First, I'll explain to you what the chart means. On the left, it's a summary chart of all the town's expenses. The first column is the category. It's not necessarily a department, it's a category. For example, general government is a category that has several departments in it. Then the next column is expense, it's pretty self-explanatory what the cost is. And then the last column's percentage, that's percentage of the total budget. Don't get it confused when you're looking at the budget document, when you see a column on that document that says percentage, and that's the percentage increase. This is completely different. This is just a piece of the entire pie. So for example, general government category is 4% of the total pie. It's a $6 million budget roughly, and the total pie is $140 million, so it's 6% of that. And then there's just a visual on the right-hand side that kind of depicts what the chart says, shows you the pieces of the pie. Obviously, we all know the school has a large part of the pie, and then you've got public safety, another big part of the pie, then you've got benefits and insurances, and then you've got some smaller departments after that, smaller categories. Overall, the total general fund went up by 3.52%. That's noting an estimated 3.8% by the schools. Also, the total municipal operations, including joint costs, went up by 3.27%. The total budget, as I stated, was $140 million. For example, general government, that one went up, you know, if you look at the number, it went up a decent amount, around 10%, don't quote me on that, 10% to 11%, somewhere in that range. If you look at general government, a lot of that's contractual type stuff. If you look at it, there was an increase over the previous year's budget in your budget document of $607,000. They restructured somebody, so there was somebody, the wellness coordinator was in the fire and police budgets, and now it got moved to general government. So those budgets went down, but general government went up for that change. That was about, between the salary and expenses, about $90,000. Contractual requirements for the CBAs was $90,000. That's parked in the human resource budget, which is also in that category. Town council, the contract, we have a new contract in place with town council that we're negotiating. There's a $50,000 increase for that. Facilities, $60,000 for electricity went up from the previous year, just to reflect the actual costs. And then the building and repair services went up $90,000 for facilities. That's to reflect the actual usage from previous years. So if you add all that up, it's about $379,000, just those items, $379,000 of the total $607,000 increase for general government. You take the 379 out, and then you're below 5% in that range. And that's, in a nutshell, what that slide says. You have any questions?
Yes, I have just one question. The very end of this, bottom of this page, there's a couple of percents. And my hearing's not that great, so I might have written down the wrong number before, there could have been some miscommunication. The municipal government, sorry, municipal operations increase is 3.27%, and the total general fund increase is 3.52, but earlier I had written down an increase of 3.62, and it might have just been me with hearing, or it could be a different value altogether.
It may have been a misstatement, but general operating, which includes everything with the exception of the schools, our insurances, et cetera, is 3.27%.
Okay.
And the public schools, 3.8 for a net average of 3.52%. So we have stayed within the 3.8% guidelines that we were given.
Perfect. So the general fund, school spending comes out of the general fund, is that correct?
What comes out, what comes out of the general fund is all of our shared expenses.
Okay.
Being the assessments, insurances, things like that. So that's part of the, part of the overall governmental cost.
Perfect, yeah, yeah. No, I wasn't connecting the dots there, so I appreciate it. And so that is essentially all of the municipal accounts, all the house for which the municipal government is responsible for.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Everything's here, and everything we're responsible for.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on.
Okay, thank you, Jilda. Our next slide, again, a lot of these slides were taken from previous years, and some of these slides, we spent a lot of time on, specifically in 2018 and '22 when I was the interim town manager. Thank goodness we've improved things since then, and this slide is, just kind of summarizes the major costs in the joint cost category. For example, Norfolk County retirement, I think the town manager stated, we estimated 7%. Health insurance, about 4% increase, for the net increase in joint costs of 1.46%, which is, which is a small percentage, but the number is about $584,000, so it's a decent amount of money. And it's, a lot of that is due to a lot of the effort of the unions in town, the town manager, your board, working with the health insurance to get that under control, because that used to be a much higher percentage increase in that, in that line. Any questions on joint costs? All right, we'll move on.
If I could make a clarification statement, Mark?
Sure.
Town manager asked me to. You'll see on this slide that retirement debt service is down by 10.3%. I want to be clear that that was not debt that was paid off at $983,000. In preparing for this budget, it became apparent that the debt service for 2024, 2025, was estimated at $9,382,172. That was an overstatement in the budget, so that budget was overstated by $968,173. So I just want to make that clear. This is something we recognized, something we've addressed, and whenever you do your debt service scheduling, you need to go to your, to your financial advisor to assist you to ensure that you're having the proper documentation. So I just wanted to point that out. We did not pay off extra debt. There was actually an error, and that error, it precedes me, and it probably precedes the others who worked on the budget at the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Biz, for the clarification on that. For the enterprise accounts, this was, this was a very difficult slide to go through a few years back, because we had about $2 million in subsidies from these for the general fund, so you're already in the hole $2 million before you even start your budget. We're happy to announce today there's zero subsidies for the water, sewer, Cedar Hill, and public health enterprise accounts. You may ask, I don't understand the public health part. That's because this year we're able to fund that from retained earnings for this particular year. So there's zero subsidies this year from the general fund for any enterprise account, which is great. Kudos to the town manager and yourself and the community for voting, you know, all the water and sewer rate increases.
So just to clarify, that we were averaging roughly $2 million a year in subsidies?
There was one, at least one particular year last year, I believe it was 1.7?
Last year was 2.3, actually.
2.3?
Well, that was free cash certification, and then you had subsidies of 1.8. So you've had historical subsidies every year, but the way things are going right now, retained earnings have not been certified, but the way we are looking at it is that these organizations are solvent and should be able to cover themselves in '26.
That's really fabulous, and thank you so much for your guidance to get us to where we are.
Thank you, Biz.
Yes, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to refer to your advertisement notice of hearing for December 17th to consider adjustments to the water, municipal water and sewer rates. So is that something that you're comfortable with discussing tonight, that we're talking about budget, or are we going to just wait until the 17th when we can discuss it focused on that?
I think that was, that was item number?
Yes.
Yeah, but I just.
Five, right? I'm very comfortable in saying that we are not recommending any increase, zero increase, to the commissioners for this budget, six months of '25 and the first six months of '26, so one year. We do this in, in December. So we will have that ready for you for public hearing on, I believe, the 7th? Or did you want to do it later? We can do it later, but there will be no increase. And as Mr. Joint, Mr. Gito reminded me, we have to have an article that states, even though it's not changing, what the water and sewer rates actually are. So we'll have that for the upcoming meeting, but there will be no increases. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's good.
Yes, Ms. Pachriski.
If I may, just on the, on the subsidies that were here, you know, just note that we, we don't have subsidies now because we had the substantial rate increase to put the right amount of money back into the account. Public health is, is a small percentage, as there is, specifically in the Cedar Hill, I just want it noted that the influx that made that possible was getting finally the right vendor in there. As you all know, for years, we had not had a vendor that was, you know, producing any revenue for the town. When this new vendor came in, it brought the golfers back as well, and on top of the, what we've gone through town meeting with the additions to Cedar Hill, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say the great job that Victor does in keeping everything going, that it is the first time that the public budget, you know, the taxpayers weren't offsetting a golf course that most people don't even use, you know, because it does bring in more out-of-town people than it does in. But again, it's now finally making money, and it's a good thing. But I just want to make sure, when we get something like that, where a vendor makes a huge difference coming in and changing the way that that golf course operated, you know, it does, it should go as noted. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Just a couple more charts.
Yep, we're almost done here. Onto the next slide, FTEs, okay. All right, so we figured we'd start off the FTE slide, because it's kind of a hot topic lately. What is an FTE? Most people say they know what it is, but when you talk to them, they don't. So an FTE, I'll just read it right from the, right from the chart here. "A full-time equivalent FTE counts employees by the number of hours they work weekly compared to a full-time employee rather than a headcount." For example, if you had a 19-hour-per-week employee, and you base it on a 35-hour-per-week, what most employees work at, 35 hours per week, if you take 19 hours divided by 35, it comes out to .54. That would be the FTE for a 19-hour-per-week employee for the town of Stoughton. If you had an employee who works 35 hours a week, and they're supposed to work 35 hours a week, they're one FTE. Pretty simple. All right, Jilda, you need some water? So that's how, that's what a full-time employee is. Do not get it confused with an EE. That term's been floating around for a few years. It's not in the budget this year for a good reason, because everybody confuses the two things. What's an FTE? What's an EE? Then everybody looks at it and doesn't understand what, what it means. An EE is just a body count. So if you had a part-time employee, FTE of .54, it's still one EE. It's a body, right? To me, the EEs don't really mean much. It's really what the FTE is, and everybody tends to understand what the FTEs are and how they're calculated. If you go through the summary of the last three years, in FY '24, the town had, this is the town side, including enterprise accounts, 325.46 FTEs. FY '25, 311.26, and this year, 306.99. You may ask, how can there be no net increase in FTEs with the new positions added? "We have added the assistant assessor, assistant town clerk, staff accountant, and a water, sewer, field inspector position, but have eliminated or consolidated other positions and moved the funding from those lines to the new positions." That's how, how it works. So you eliminate one spot, and you move it to another spot. That's how you can create new positions and still maintain your FTEs. All right, last slide, if anybody, I don't know if anybody has a question on that slide or not.
Any questions on that slide? We think this is the basis of our budget and our cost-reduction strategy. We're adding jobs where strategically we need to add jobs, for instance, assessing and finance, to figure out how to fix our books and to collect more revenue that has been uncollected or not collected for many years in the assessing office. So we've added positions to strengthen the organization, but at the same time, we've reduced positions. An example is in water and sewer. I'd like to point this out, if I may. The administrative consist, administrative staff consisted of a $98,000 employee, and that employee was terminated. And rather than replace that administrative And rather than replace that administrative person, we gave the four remaining administrative staff, who felt they had excess bandwidth to do more work, $5,000 stipends per year, to do that work that was done by the person we terminated. So we, we got rid, not got rid of, we eliminated about $100,000 job with all the benefits, healthcare, sick days, holidays, vacation days, and replaced them with four stipends that have no benefits attached to those stipends. We've done that more than a dozen times in the last two years, and that's the reason you're seeing the direction of full-time employees get reduced while production has increased.
Thanks, Matt.
That's great. Great point, Tom. There's no other questions. We'll move on to the second-to-last slide in the presentation. And I would just, there's not much to talk about on this slide, other than there's been a huge effort in the last two years to get an org chart, you know, organized, adds up to the budget, everything matches, that there's been years where you look at the org charts, and then you look at the budgets, and the FTEs that we were just talking about don't, don't match and don't add up, and there's confusion. And then the people think that you might not be transparent and things like that. This year, I got to give a lot of credit to our GIS coordinator, who takes on many different tasks. He took on the org chart task along with Deanna, and they, they were back and forth on dozens of emails to get this right. So the org chart that you see in front of you, it was in your packet, it was organized in a fashion where there's, now there's a summary chart on the front that matches the total summary chart that's in your budget. As you move through, every department budget actually has the FTEs from FY '25 and FY '26, and a little chart next to it. Every position is labeled and all of the FTEs accounted. So it's solid, and this will be part of the process every year moving forward, updating this. Once you get it right, once you get it right, it's easy to update from year to year, and I believe that's where we are right now. So thank you, Larry, and Langlois, our GIS coordinator, and Deanna for helping out with that tremendously.
One final comment, members, is I want to bring you back to the introduction, where it talks about the overriding FY '26 budget strategy is to make the budget format more readable, as Mark just went through, more user-friendly, more transparent, and well-footnoted. I hope as you review it over the next two weeks, you find that we've met our strategic objectives and that it stands on its own. That was the top priority this year, is that it be standing on its own. We're not trying to hide anything. It's why Biz just disclosed the $1 million in debt that she found. So I hope you enjoy the, the document. We worked hard on it. We're very proud of it, and I think it'll be very productive for our next discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And the, this presentation fulfills the town charter requirement laid out in section C4-2F, which is the town manager shall keep the select board fully advised as to the needs of the town within the scope of his duties and furnish them on or before the 31st day of December each year, careful, detailed budget. And so at this point, this falls, you know, this transmission has occurred, we, the next step is that for the next couple of weeks, the select board will be and deliberate on the budget. Our own internal select board policies have us meeting on the 7th, on the 14th, and that the charter requirement per section C3-3B requires that the select board vote on this budget and submit it to the finance committee by January 21st. And so then as, what is that? It's like the honor before the third Tuesday in January. So our deadline now is, is to work through this, ask questions, and by January 21st, we have to complete and vote on this budget and transmit it to, to the finance committee and the rules committee. Though, I will entertain questions pertaining to the presentation we just had. It's 9:40. I have personally recognized that we usually expire at 10 o'clock, you know, and I would like to, if we have questions, keep them brief, but really, I want to make sure people have their questions answered. We have several days to have all those questions answered. Does anybody have any questions? Is that a no? No, everyone's good? Okay, so we'll, we'll move forward with, with the schedule that we just laid out, and next meet on this to discuss on January 7th. Thank you very much. I know this team has been working very diligently on this, and it has been an extraordinary challenge, but you've all been up to the task, and we are all extremely grateful for that. Thank you. So that we can maybe get through the remainder of this meeting, we have a consent agenda. There's two, two items. Application, item A is application for a Hanukkah dreidel display and one-day menorah display. This is from the Shaloh House Shabbat. B, ratification and final approval of executive session vote to approve the Stoughton Town Hall Employees Association and Stoughton Library Staff Association Memorandums of Agreement. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Ms. Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, anybody want to say no? Any abstentions? Great. Unanimous. Consent agenda is approved. And the last item is special town meeting warrant. There's a couple items to discuss here. First of all, the package, the warrant that you have at your desk is the latest and greatest version of this. There've been a couple of minor changes, and I don't mind just detailing what those are. So the ones that are available in the package is slightly modified. First, there's an inclusion of three petitioned articles. There's also, within Article I, there's, was one change to a parcel number, 077, sorry, it shows up in the original package as 0070020, and the actual number should have been 0770020. Additionally, there was an inclusion, I think there was some doubling of words that were removed, and bond counsel, both town council and bond counsel, as well as the MSBA, and the bond counsel has, we include some language regarding the sunset clause. It's embedded in there, and that was not in the version that's in the, in the package. But this version has been vetted, as I mentioned, by the MSBA's attorneys, by town council, and by our bond counsel, and all feel comfortable with the language therein. We have, I guess, four tasks all together. There's three of them listed on our web, on our agenda, but let's make sure we, we don't miss anything. So the first thing is we have to order these items and insert them into the warrant, which anybody's welcome to make a motion to, to do so, if there's no questions about it.
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone, anyone say no? Abstentions? Okay, good. Unanimous. Next item is to close the warrant. Is there a motion, I entertain a motion to close this special town meeting warrant? Made by Vice Chair Carrera, seconded by Mr. McChrisky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous. The next is to set the date for a special town meeting. We had voted to follow the schedule outlined in the letter that I provided to everybody that has us at February 3rd, which is a Monday. I've spoken with the town moderator. He'll be out of town on, on February 3rd, and asked if it was possible to move it to the 10th. If not, he understands. I also spoke with the deputy town moderator, who said that she is not afraid of the opportunity, but would also understand if we want the, to have our regular town moderator available for this. So she leaves it very much up to us. So and that would be for, the following Monday is February 10th. So the question is, do we stick with February 3rd, or do we move it to February 10th?
I would move to set the date of February 3rd.
Okay.
And I would tell you why if I get a second.
It's second.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded. Mr. Gito, any discussion? So you have the floor.
I think that we should give the residents of the town as much opportunity as possible to know what the, what the vote is, so that, that they can take, they can take that into account as they talk among themselves and as they go to the polls later on. I think that the, the deputy town moderator certainly is capable and has the spunk to, to in fact, do the job.
I agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
If everyone feels.
What was the date he offered?
So the original date that we picked is February 3rd, and the following Monday would be February 10th, and that was what the moderator had, had, he will be back by the 10th.
And what was Luke, Luke going?
February 3rd. Okay, so the motion has been made, it was made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Ms. McChrisky, to, to have special town meeting occur on February 3rd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? So it's four for October, for February 3rd, and, sorry, four yeses, one no. The final item is to authorize and instruct the town staff, sorry, authorize and instruct town staff to publish the warrant in accordance with state law and the Stoughton Town Charter. Is there a motion?
So made.
Second.
Okay. Motion to authorize and instruct town staff to publish the warrant in accordance with state law and the Stoughton Town Charter, made by Ms. Roberts, seconded by Mr. McChrisky. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I do apologize, I was thinking of something earlier. If I could ask the indulgence of the board for two minutes, Luke Azak is in the other little room, and he's videotaping this and going live, and I'm going to ask Luke, because I know he can hear me back there, to come out for one minute. Come on, Luke. There he is. Grab, grab a seat right up front there, so your own cameras will see you.
I'd have to switch to me.
Then switch it over so we can see you.
Joe's never without a surprise.
No, you'll like, you'll like this. You'll like this. All right, Luke is down here. He swapped all of us, and now everybody can see him. I just wanted to shout out Luke and Kevin Weldon, who used to be at SMAC, a great team over there, and I'm going to let him give the, the details quickly, quickly, is they won a great award when they did the video on the train station, which was helpful in us obtaining the grant, where I was interviewed along with Dwight McCarron from the Historical Society, the president. So Luke, give a shortness about what the award was, how many competitors there were for it, and so forth.
So it's the ACMNE. It's a new northeastern New England and New York award. We got first place in documentary for The Train Depot, as well as first place in political and issues in political process. Yes, I have to thank, obviously, Joe McChrisky and everyone at the Historical Society who did so much, Kevin, who just blew it out of the water. He put so much work and effort, and yeah, really grateful for everyone who helped us make that.
Yeah, I just wanted the residents to know, and my colleagues here, he's humbled, because all we do is sit in front of a camera and talk about things we know about, and they got it. They did a great job, the footage, the music, everything. It was phenomenal. The first time I had watched it, and the same thing with Dwight, you know, we said, how can we get them at the Historical Society on their other time? So congratulations, take that back on, you know, to your staff and your friends, because it's, that's, that's a great achievement.
And I know Kevin would be thanking everybody as well, and I want to make sure he.
Kevin's a great guy. He's got to get back here someday. We got to get him back, so.
I want to give a little applause, too. That was great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And it should be noted that David Azak, who's volunteered a number of years in, in town government, is Luke's dad. Not that he wants everybody to know that, but you know, David's a great guy. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the couple seconds.
Very, very worthy, very, very worthy. Okay, great. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So made.
Second.
Motion was made to adjourn by Mr. McChrisky, seconded by Mr. McChrisky, sorry, made by Ms. McChrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. I told you, 10 o'clock is the, is the deadline. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Adjourn? Okay. And you know, abstentions? Unanimous, we're adjourning. The time is now 9:49. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
You're welcome, too.
Right.